Okay, so I'd like to call to order the Williston School Board meeting for February 13th, 2013. We'll start with our adjustments to the agenda. We need to add 7.4 personnel leave requests.
And we're comfortable with that being out of executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I do have an executive session request that we add the pipeline, the My Dress Pipeline, into executive session.
Do we have, was Bob getting more information on that piece?
I don't know.
And that, we can do that for property, is it related to our property?
It's litigation.
Okay.
It's litigation, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we'll add an executive session.
And then I would request-
Do we need Bo, do we need Bob for that, or did, I didn't know if he had gotten more information.
It'd probably be helpful to have him, it may be a short conversation, but-
So if we can snag Bob for that?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll text him.
Okay.
And then I have a question on the travel-related expenses policy, so if we could take that out of-
Alright, so we'll pull 8.3.2 out of the consent agenda. Okay, anything else? Alright, we'll move on to 3.0, Audience and Communications. Do we have any audience members that-
That want to communicate?
Yes, would like to communicate, now is the time. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming you're all Williston resident, you're Williston, I know you are.
Yes. So, I'm Marla McQuestion, I do know a fair amount of you. I'm here from a group of students, a group of parents of students with special needs, and we're very concerned about the proposed change for the co-teaching program. And although, you know, we agree in theory that it's better to have students with the most disabilities taught by teachers with the most education, and I've done a lot of research on that in the past, the, the fear is that we have not had, we've not seen the concrete plans for this new co-teaching, there's, there's a lot of questions, I actually have a list of questions that we've made up to present to look for some specific answers. I'm gonna start with one, like a little story to explain some of my reasoning. My son, Justin, who is now at high school, but has been in Williston schools, he was in Williston schools for eight years, or I would say for five out of his eight years, he had good teachers and good learning, and this was because for those years he had some of the best teachers in the school, we had Margaret Munt, we had a lot of good teachers. And they worked hard to include him, they worked hard to work with the special educator and the paraeducator and give him a good education at his level, make adaptations, bring him into the classroom, make modifications to the class teaching when he was in there. And he learned a lot. And for two of those years, he had a paraeducator who was a elementary ed certified and experienced teacher, and she was his paraeducator, and she essentially taught him reading and math. And I know that she's also taught another child with Down Syndrome how to read, and I know that another child with Down Syndrome also learned to read essentially using the research-based method that's worldwide accepted for teaching children with Down Syndrome. So those three kids mostly learned from their paraeducators. So, the other three years of his time in Williston, we had teachers and special educators who put very little time and effort into him. They even dismissed lesson plans that I made up and sent in for the paraeducator to use. They didn't use the materials that we talked about, that I would prepare and have for them to be used. And the paraeducator at that time had no education background, so she, you know, did what she was told by the teacher. In that period of time, he became a behavior problem. At the end of, towards the end of that period of time, actually about halfway through, they, there were so many complaints about his behavior that when his evaluation came up, they asked for a behavior evaluation. So, he wasn't learning, he wasn't producing anything, he was bored, they were giving him coloring papers, and this was fifth and sixth grade. So I've seen what happens when you have teachers and special educators who either, who don't do what they should be doing. When they either, I'm not sure whether it's lack of training, or lack of knowledge, or lack of taking responsibility, no one seems to know whose responsibility it is sometimes. And, and we got a lot of, you know, well, I don't have time for this. So, whatever it is, it's not an education, you know, he, he basically lost three years of education in Williston. And you can say, well, you know, kids have a bad teacher sometimes, well, my other kids did too. You know, I have two older boys, and they both had teachers that they didn't get along with or they didn't like, but they continue learning. The other kids continue learning, even if they have a teacher that they don't like, or they don't get along with, or, you know, they continue learning. Justin doesn't. These kids don't learn unless you've made modifications and changes to their pro, to the program and to the delivery and to the testing, then he's able to learn. When we've had good teachers, he's learned fantastically. The last two years in Williston, he did a great job. He had a great special educator, the house that he was in bent over backwards to have him be, have stuff modified, the teacher said to us, you know, I modified this to bring it to Justin's level to teach, begin the teaching in this unit, and it was great for the rest of kids in my class. So, you know, it works if you, if the teachers are trained and the teachers are willing to do it. But that's what we're concerned about, that without paraeducators that are able to do some of this backup, you know, and you're gonna cut the time from special educators and you're gonna cut time from teachers, and then you're gonna take out the paraeducators, you know, we're just concerned that there doesn't seem to be a concrete plan here. I mean, we've read, we, so anyhow.
And I'm just curious, so have you met with Carter Smith or Megan Roy, the special ed?
No.
So that, that would be my recommendation, just to contact either Carter, and I'm sure, Walter, you can help facilitate that piece, because, you know, Carter's in charge of, of that piece, and then Megan Roy, who is the director of special ed for CSSU, is also very knowledgeable about the co-teaching model. And there's also Act 153 where all of special education is being consolidated through CSSU, so instead of Williston kind of doing their own thing, it's now under a district level.
Yeah.
So Megan Roy would be the contact person for that piece.
Well, that's my, the other part of, I mean, I'm here, my kid isn't in Williston anymore, and so you're kind of wondering, well, what am I doing here? Well, a bunch of us met, a bunch of parents that I know, and as it turned out, not too many of them were willing to come here and speak, because they're afraid that if they speak up and disagree with the special education department, that that will have immediate consequences to their IEP team, to their child's program, and a lot of them are happy with their situation right now, and they don't wanna risk it. And that, to me, is really, a really appalling thing, because essentially it means that they feel that they are being bullied. I mean, we're funding a budgetary item to, to teach children not to bully, but the parents of special ed kids feel bullied. I mean, we have a right to have as good a relationship with other parents, I mean, with other teachers, as, as other kids do. And, you know, that they didn't wanna come to this meeting, I mean, that's why I'm here, 'cause my kid's not there, but I've been in that position where I felt like, you know, what do I say, I need a lawyer on my back pocket to be able to come into an IEP meeting and make sure that my kid is getting what he's due? I mean, I'm not asking for outrageous stuff, I have two kids who are very smart, gifted kids, who have gone through this school system, I know you wanna, you wanna serve all the kids, but, you know.
And I also know it's, it's intimidating to come to a school board meeting as well, so my recommendation would be-
Well, right.
Would be to start at the school level with the people who are working with their children?
I think they're afraid to do that, that's the point.
And so, can I interject here for a second? Maybe a solution to this, because I can totally understand how sitting in front and being fearful of repercussion.
Yeah.
There shouldn't be.
No.
And most likely there wouldn't be, but I understand. So what I would suggest, and Walter, or, or, I don't know, maybe is do something similar to what we're doing with the iPads, I think parents are just afraid, they don't understand what this change will entail, so maybe just have an open meeting where all parents are included, and that we just talk to them, this is why we're doing this, this is how we're gonna do it, and this is how it's not gonna impact what you have today.
And that was exactly what my last line was, that we would like to see some open meetings such as set up for, when we did the reconfiguration, we had me, plenty of meetings, plenty of discussions before anything got changed, so that everybody could put their input and say what they wanted and, you know.
And that's where, if you don't mind, we interject, Marla, at this point. Um, my name is Kim Allum, and I moved here two, two years ago.
Kim, is it Kim Allen or-
Allum, A-H-L-U-M, from California, and I literally, when I say I fought the state of California about special education and what children should be receiving on IEPs or 504s, I know what it's like. And I got so tired of fighting the systems, and so tired of calling hearings, and doing everything I possibly could for my son to be included in general education classroom, I had enough, and I said, this is ridiculous, I researched the best places in the United States for inclusive education, and that led me to people like Michael John Greco, who I'm finishing my master's degree this semester, in early childhood special education. I could not be a more researched-based mother you will ever meet in your entire life, if you didn't, an article, Marla always knows, call Kim. I fought really hard, I sold my home, I sold everything I had for what I believe is an inclusive education. Inclusive, to me, is not even a conversation of whether a child needs a one-to-one paraeducator, if the child needs to access their education, that, that's not even a question, all children belong in that classroom. I didn't travel 3,200 miles to Williston without doing all of the research that I possibly could as far as inclusive communities, and I can't say that enough about what I researched Vermont, New Hampshire, Massachusetts. And I finally said, you know, being in, from San Francisco, Berkeley, Stanford, I used all of those resources to get my, my son the best he could get. And I really, I'm hoping with all of you and hearing parents' stories like this, and like Marla, who's been here forever with a child with Down Syndrome, we're not asking for a ton, we're asking for community support from all of you to hear our stories and to not, with all due respect, not drive us to three people within a district. It's not just those three people, and I understand this is a district-wide movement, I get it, I couldn't be more embedded in UVM and the dean's office and everything that's going on, state-of-the-art education, again, it's why I'm here, it's why I chose Williston. But if you really wanna hear parents, that's your community, these are our children, this is not just about my son with a disability, I cannot tell you, I can show you the videos of what it was like in California, of my son crawling under a desk, not being able to access his education, to having a properly-trained paraeducator accessing his education, he is now having full conversations on his iPad, he's having full conversations with all the children in his room, and he has changed the dynamics of the classroom to such a better place, and I'm not just saying this because I'm a mom, I'm also an educator, and I can tell you, the impact that these kids have on the classrooms is phenomenal. But if you're going to make such a drastic change, and what Michael John Greco's research, it is somewhat of a drastic change, I think you're about 10 years away from it in my research, personally, because you do not have properly-trained, not even paraeducators, but special educators and classroom teachers. So for us as parents to start over every single year, for me to have to get my master's degree, to be able to help the teacher of the classroom with their IEP, that's ridiculous. And I don't mind staying and fighting, I'm just getting really tired.
Yeah, so Kim and Marla, I appreciate, I don't know if, does anyone else wanna say anything? I, I appreciate hearing your stories, the, the part about the budget pieces, we gathered community input starting in October around, you know, we had a, a community forum when Carter did his special ed presentation, so the budget for next year is set, so it's not something that we can make changes, it's already been warned, and, so it's, you know, that's a done deal to say, just because we started in October, it's, it's been warned, it's up as far as the new model that's being put in place.
But, but the budget being, being set does not necessarily mean that what's coming is bad, and I think this is why I think it's important for, for the administration to have an opportunity to sit down and share with you guys-
What the plan is.
-what this new change will actually mean, because I think assuming that the change means we're moving, we're taking away good, is not necessarily the right decision.
No.
At least not yet.
No.
Give us a chance to sit down and, and express to you what it is that we will be moving towards.
Well, and that's-
And then if, if, if that is still not good enough, that doesn't mean that we can't change, maybe budget-wise, there, you know, in that specific line, no, but there's always ways to do things better.
Right.
I, I mean, I think that's a lot of it, is people, I think people who have done a lot of research on this, which Kim and I both have, understand the point of inclusion and understand the point of inclusion of child, children being in the classroom and not pulled out is better, but when you've lived through years of, I mean, Justin has to be pulled out now almost constantly, because his, his education level is so low that he can't even sit and listen and participate in some things, and some of that is Down Syndrome, some of that, but some of it isn't, and, you know, he's missed several years of schooling, so, you know.
So Walter, can you reach out to Kim and Marla and maybe set something up?
Right, do you have a set of questions you were gonna leave?
Yeah.
Because that would be helpful.
Yeah, we would like to, and that was basically what everybody was hoping, was to have some sort of a, a, sit down and-
And this was for, this list was for, actually, like, all the parents, it was not just two people getting together and writing this?
Yeah, no, this was a-
Just out of curiosity, what, what, how many parents are we talking about?
Well, at the meeting that we had, it was about 15 families represented, and each of those-
I consider that significant.
-knew another.
And, and we, we appreciate-
And we've since heard of some other families in Shelburne that are also concerned.
I would really encourage you to talk to Megan Roy, to really set up a meeting and hear what her business is.
But, but in a different way though, and I'm sorry, I do wanna focus, because I think what is necessary is to have an open forum, more parents who are free and comfortable to come in and listen.
Yeah, I think that would be better, because if it's an, if it's an open thing for the whole community, I mean, this will affect other people, this will affect regular education kits, you know.
Well, the concept of co-teaching is that it's for all children, you know, that it's, you're getting the benefits of having a-
Right, and I think the fact that other people haven't spoken to it a lot is that they, I mean, I, I wasn't, wasn't on my radar, I don't get the school bell, so, you know, um, sorry.
It is your time, yeah.
I don't either, Marla, so.
But, you know, other people don't understand co-teaching, and, no offense, but the communication in the front page of the school bell doesn't leave a lot of room for people to communicate back. So, you know, people read it and they kinda go, okay, well, I didn't quite understand that, but, you know.
Well, to Kim's point, the fact that they all benefit in the class, and that's-
They do, and, you know, you can bring that to the table.
But the, the teachers have to have some kind of special education training, and not, that does not include a seminar. So what is, you know, that's one of the things, on an agenda, if you had an open forum, I would suggest to Megan and, and whomever else that's going to lead this or have a discussion is, what are the credentials? So if you're gonna have a co-teaching model, what are the credentials of the teachers, as well as everybody else that is going to teach these children? There are obviously some kids, like my son, that are gonna need one-to-one, I mean, that's not even a question, that's IEP.
And I think because we are an inclusion state, that our classroom teachers do have more expertise than probably where you were in California.
I think that parents just need to hear that, though.
I think so too.
From what I'm standing back as an outsider, I mean, but-
But I, I've had some, I've had some special educators and some teachers, I mean, in fifth and sixth grade, they handed him coloring papers, until I found out about it, and I said, look, this is not inclusion, you know.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay if you wanna hear our technology presentation, it's coming. Alright, that's it for Audience and Communications, we'll move on to 4.0, our technology presentation, 4.1.
So I've been looking around the room, thinking, how can I hook into that projector? We're gonna, I guess I have a figure, so, it's good to see all of you. I'm gonna talk a little bit while I kind of hook this up. And one of the things that I wanted to just share verbally is, as they said, there's communication, we're trying really hard to educate our community about this, I've had a list of it, and there have been things in the school bell, but more important, and I, I wanna make sure you all know this, is that there is a new section on our school website that's got more and more things daily, and those things include, more recently, a list of frequently asked questions coming from parents. So they're feeding questions to me, I've heard through the FAP coordinators, but I'm also anticipating that you all might be getting questions and wanna make sure that you know that that exists. As a place to steer people for answers. I'm almost there, I'm disconnecting my projector from my computer.
Do you want us to skip on to something and come right back to you, Bonnie, or what?
Sure.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, and I just don't want you to feel pressured.
Yeah, we can jump down to some stuff.
5.1, Program Council, should we do that?
Chris, can you?
Do you wanna do Program Council?
Because they're, they're setting up.
Hello.
So, at the beginning of the year, as I had mentioned, we as a Program Council picked a number of topics that we'd like to address this year, and at the most recent meeting last month, we were able to take up the topic of scheduling. It's something that a lot of folks on Program Council said they'd like to take a look at and maybe provide some suggestions. And to generate, or to kind of start the discussion, we actually had people work on Google Docs and submit things that they thought were working well with scheduling and things that could be improved or changed. And from that, we were able to break it down into three areas, specialized student activities, which are kind of the nice, really great things and the diversity of offerings we offer to students, core content time, and student need time, so that's like intervention times. And we broke, the Program Council members got to choose the topic they wanted to work on, and they spent a real good chunk of time just coming up with ideas of, well, how could we look at these areas of need in a different way, how could we meet, you know, the challenges in a different way? And the really great thing was, we kind of took the, the time part out of the equation, it was definitely part of the considerations, but it's such a finite resource, you know, it could have really led us into, you know, well, your program isn't as important as my program, and we really wanted it to be a productive discussion, and it, and it came out to be a very good one. So, some of the ideas that came up were thinking about our move towards the common core curriculum, and the standards that are presented there, they're, they're fairly broad, but they also offer a lot of chances to integrate what we're doing. So, we could be doing writing and science and, you know, math at the same time, or we could do reading and social studies, and these are things that already happen to a degree, but we really could be thoughtful about it, so that when we're thinking about core time with students, we're getting, you're hitting a lot of areas at once, and that might give us some other options for interventions or other activities. We also thought about, do special events always have to happen during the school day? Could they be scheduled to the afternoon, could there be evening performances? And also, we looked at the idea of an intervention block. We have related arts, which is kind of a set block, and we all schedule around the related arts, because it's an important part of the kid's curriculum, could we also think of an intervention block, so kids who might need either extra support to gain access to the content, or maybe additional, you know, enrichment activities, and having a time designated during the day where we could be looking at that and not have it be a conflict with other parts of our day, but just actually a part of our day that's integrated. So, we created a list of recommendations for the administration, they're gonna look at those, and they'll get back to us on, you know, which ones might work, which ones we might wanna try, and we'll be meeting soon to talk about our next program meeting, which will be in March. So, it was a very productive meeting, a lot of good thoughts, and I think it really reflected what we try to do, which is to be an advisory council to the administration based on the experience we bring, so.
Great, scheduling is so huge.
Yeah, yeah, and there's so many, it's all these different parts thinking about it. I think we've tried to, you know, come at it in a lot of different ways, and we just needed some fresh ideas to look at it, so.
And I may observe, I know we've been talking about, you know, kind of more flexible school day, and it sounds like, you know, having a faculty discuss it, it just dovetails where, where everything's moving, so that's, so it's very helpful.
Yeah, I think there's been a recognition of the Spark Program, the extended day, being an option, and it seems to be going well, and so it's being well-received by a lot of the people in FAP, in the district.
Would it be possible for us to get a glimpse into scheduling challenges?
We can, I'd have, I'd have the principals come, the, the simple answer is, we're trying to put too much into, into too small a package, as simple as that.
Well, I understand that.
No, but that's what it is, I mean.
I understand that, but what I'm trying to understand is, conceptually, I understand that, but I'd like to see it contextually. Could we have a discussion about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things we'll have to decide on, because there's a lot of different things that are even coming up through this meeting, the question will be is, where do we wanna put our time, because we can't do them all. So we have to kind of prioritize and say, is it, I mean, drama's the question, is that what it is? Is it drama, is it, we have safety on the table, you know, there's a lot of different things we're working on, where do we wanna start?
And exactly because we want to do the right thing, because I think we're trying to give too much and be really good at a lot, and our day is finite, right?
Right now, yes.
So what we would like to maybe decide personally, and guys, I might be the only one, but I would love to understand, what, what is it that is competing against everybody, really, because it's spending everybody's time, and everybody's trying to do the best for every, for, for everything, but there's so much we can give.
Yeah, I don't know that that's our role, but I think it's helpful to have the Program Council hearing the way that they're thinking about that piece, and then Walter, the admin-
Perhaps, yeah, just if I can interject, I certainly don't want to get into minutia of how you figure it out, but what would be helpful, I think, is, is just understanding, maybe it's, it's like a, I almost, in my mind, I just think, you know, I'm a business guy, so I think presentations, so I, I can almost see like, just like a top pager that says, you know, this is, these are the hours we have to commit to certain programs, you know, that are mandated.
An hour for bridges and-
These are the programs that we also do, that we've prioritized as being important beyond that, these are the things that we're trying to do on top of that, that still gets fit in, and these are the things that don't even get in, that we, that we'd love to do. And just having a, kind of a concept of the amount of time it takes to do those things, just for our own, that's, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a matter of micromanaging, it's really just to help you guys prioritize, because we can only do so much, right? And I think it's very important for us collectively to figure out where we want to be really good at, because we can't be good at everything.
Yeah, because when we go back and have the conversation with the community, that knowledge, I think, helps me inform them too, but that's how, that's all I wanna know.
And I just wanted to add, like, I think in our discussion, you know, the concept of the core time, like, that, I mean, there's designated times for math and English language arts, things like that, I don't think those are, you know, there's a sense that that's gotta be in there, and it wasn't so much a thing of, like, I don't have time to teach kids the content they need, it was, you know, it's kind of like, you know, fitting, like- It was, you know, it's kind of like, you know, fitting, like, kind of smooth transitions, not only for the teachers, but also for the kids. And I think that was a big focus for us, too, is we know that we have to do some shifting to make things work. So, what could we, but what could we do to make it work for kids? And as I said, there were a lot of good ideas about, well, can we think about how we're instructing things? Can we blend some things together so kids aren't going here, 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 but we could actually kind of have a more integrated whole? So, I think that was really nice about, you know, what people brought up as ideas to address this.
I don't want to belabor the point, but I just want to share with you guys an experience that I personally had in a classroom this week. So, I went to volunteer at my daughter's class, and we were talking about boycotting and introducing the concept, et cetera. So, all the kids got it clear, they were learning how to summarize, the kids were ready to go. And then all of a sudden, in trickle, three kids, three kids that have been pulled out of class to go to band. So, I am a volunteer, so I, in order to not disrupt a teacher who's already working with a group of kids, I went to these three. I repeated the entire session for these three kids so they could get caught up. And so, why is Ben not like chorus after school? Why are we pulling them out of the class for band? You know, and I'm not saying that's right or wrong, all I'm saying is that there clearly is a challenge. And I think we just need to figure out if maybe Ben can be put after school, if maybe they're, I don't know. You know, I don't know everything that happens in school, and I don't even intend to.
Yeah, and then they all have individual, the little lessons that they have.
That's small group lesson.
Yeah. It's small group lesson versus big Dan.
Right. But then, that's, that's, I think, what we need to make sure we, parents understand what it actually means for the kids to be pulled out of, like, core subjects, for them to learn to play flute. I'm not saying flute is bad, I actually think it's a wonderful thing to learn music. But you know where I'm going. I just think we need to figure out. I understand the challenge, that's all I'm saying.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Back to Bonnie.
Yeah, and Jared.
I know Jared.
Hi.
Jared, you're on our Facebook page, I don't know if you saw it, with, you've been at the Common Core.
Yeah. I'll get royalties on that, I'm sure.
Yeah. And Molly's on it, too. The Cbed pictures from the group sessions, yes, so I, I.
We were probably looking at your iPads.
Speaking of technology.
Yeah, so anyway.
I lifted the Cbed pictures and put them on the Williston School Board Facebook page.
Yes, I saw them there. But I had seen it first on Twitter, that Cbed posted it there. So, I just want to, I know you can't see this very well, and I don't think we're supposed to dim the lights because our friends at RIT don't have to pick up everything. But I'm just going to show, just describe what's here, then you can do this on your own. But there are lots of articles that I have, I mean, I have a multitude, but there's a sampling there, that I think really state our purpose and explain why iPads pretty well. There, we're looking for actually examples of work that students have produced on an iPad, and that's not possible to do very much yet in Williston, because we don't have them. But we are finding examples from near and far, so that people who are asking the questions, and there are quite a few, what are you going to actually do with these, can see some examples of that. There is one example from Jared's class, which he's going to share with us in a moment. A log type of page with recent updates of what we've been working on and where we are. And the Frequently Asked Questions page, I'm going to just quickly show you, there's quite a few questions that people have been asking. But another reason that I wanted to show that to you is, I was thinking about the parent that was just here, who said, you know, there's all this information in the school bell, but then there's not a way for people to then communicate back. And that's what we did put here. There's a link right on this page, if someone else has a question that they don't see here, ask it. And in fact, the school bell went out at some point this afternoon, and I've already received a question from, I don't know who, but, so we'll add the, to that page as well. And then the final link takes you to a library where you can get actual files, and there's a draft of our iPad handbook and our iPad pledge for students and parents.
That's on the website?
That's on the website. So, these are drafts, but they're close. I will confess that a lot of this has come from the work that Heinsberg did for their iPad program, and at our CSSU level meeting last week.
That's great.
It was discussed, you know, we should be consistent across the supervisory union. So, there's quite a bit where I changed Heinsberg to Williston. But at the same time, there's a lot of good work that's gone into this, and this was also taken from other people's good work, and that's our, we're benefiting from people having done this before. And so, those documents are there with lots of steps on how we're going to manage this, and how it's all going to function, and what our expectations are, and will students take them home, et cetera. So, please either, well, check that section out yourself, but also direct others to look at it. I'm going to just quickly talk, I don't know, years ago, Walter and I know, have talked about the SAMR model. It's a model of how we're going to transform schools from what we do right now, or have done in the past with our schools, and where we need to go. And, you know, I think we'd all agree, schools are changing, our world is changing, and therefore, teaching and learning also needs to change. And the SAMR model, it stands for these four words, substitution being at the bottom level, augmentation, modification, and redefinition, which is the transformation stage. And this is, again, hard to see, but you can, substitution is where we're using technology to substitute for something we could do without it. And then, as we work our way up, we're using technology in more intricate, rigorous ways to really change what we do for our learners and with our learners. And one of the reasons I wanted to show that is, you know, this is something that we've been learning about for years, but now, there's the SAMR model, and which apps are going to help us at each of these levels. So, at this level, we're reading books on our iPads, but as we work our way up, we're engaging those students in doing things they cannot do without that device. And it's really, really powerful. And some of these, we already have access to, so VoiceThread, for example, has a fabulous app, it's a much better interface than on the web, on a computer. But we have a school-wide VoiceThread account already, and every single one of our students has an account. So, we're ready to go with tools like that, that are at that redefinition stage. So, I just wanted to share, I mean, to me, this is an amazing, exciting opportunity, and I'm thrilled that this is even on the table. So, Jared's going to take it from here, because one of those, oh, I have one more thing. One of those apps at the redefinition stage is one that he's been using with students, and he can definitely speak to it. This, and I will send you all the link for this little presentation, because there's links in it. But this is from a page about iPads and the Common Core, and how our students are going to create any of these types of things using iPads. But, you know, I always go, digital stories make the most sense immediately to people, we're creating stories online. But when you click on that link, this is just an image of it, but when you click on that link on this webpage, it takes you to another page, which shows you step by step how we're going to teach this in our classrooms, which tools we need, which apps we need, and then with real live examples of produced work by students. So, this, I think, is just a really incredibly valuable site.
Jared.
Me?
Yes.
So, one of the ones that was at the top, is this app called Edge Creations, which takes an iPad and turns it into basically an interactive whiteboard. If you want to think about it in terms of turning an iPad into a smart board, that's kind of what this app does. Whatever pen strokes you make on the iPad, whatever you say with your voice, whatever pictures you take are immediately embedded in kind of a slide-by-slide presentation. I use it with students all the time to kind of create a public record of the work we're doing, because I'll take a picture with my iPad, and I can upload it into Edge Creations, and then the whole class can see it using a technology called AirServer, which allows me to wirelessly stream my iPad onto a projector. So, one of the things I'm using it for, to kind of blend in with our push towards our technology goal of kind of more global publishing of ideas, is Michael Willis, a fourth grade teacher, teaches on Kaleidoscope. His students and I exchange tweets. So, his students will tweet my student's Twitter account with ideas, and then we'll respond. And I'm using Edge Creations along with this, the Best Practices work of conferring with students. So, I'll take one student or two students, and I'll confer with them on our day's idea. And if it fits in with some, a topic that we've received from Michael Willis, we'll tweet this back as a video. So, what Bonnie has queued up is me conferring with a student, and I'll be the one that sounds incredibly nasally, because you can't edit your voice in it. And we're conferring on, I'm conferring with her on angle sum of triangles, so it's a fifth grade student. And we're, we've done this in response to some of the work that the fourth graders were doing about their geometry unit. And every keystroke, every pen stroke you see is the student named Ashley, it's her, it's her voice narrating it, it's her keystrokes. I'm throwing in some coaching questions for her to consider. And when she advances a slide on Edge Creations, the video will advance as well, and you'll see an actual photo of student work that she's going to then move on to explain, so.
That was a good setup.
Thanks. Hello, Mr. Willis and your fourth grade math students. I am here with Ashley, and we have also been working on angles and triangles in fifth grade. So, we're going to give you a little bit of an update about what we've been up to. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley.
Okay. So, what we did is, we came with a triangle, and we cut the corners off of it, and then we wrote numbers in them.
We did this with a real triangle that we actually drew on a piece of paper and then cut out. So, we actually physically tore the corners off.
So, after we turned the corners off, we took the corners and we sticked them all together.
Yep. And that's here.
And then, so, here's one angle, there's another, and then there's another. So, they created a half circle with a 180-degree line down here at the bottom. And there is a right angle right here, and a cute angle right here, and then a cute angle there. And they created a half circle with the tips we used.
Great. So, we, what we know is, we've been studying things like straight angles, and we know that a straight line makes a straight angle, and the measure of that is 180 degrees. So, it sounds like we're agreeing with your findings about the triangle being 180 degrees for the angles on the inside as well. One of the things that we're going to explore starting tomorrow is what the angle sum is for a parallelogram that is not a rectangle, and we'll keep you posted. But I hope you like this, and let us know. Bye.
Bye.
So, there's been this amazing collaboration between Jared's class and Michael Willis's class for months now, and they are connecting on math concepts and sharing their learning. And it's a great illustration of that school-wide goal that was set near the beginning of the year about how we're going to share, publish, collaborate beyond our classroom walls. And they've done it within Williston, but beyond their classroom walls. And it has been, I mean, you can speak to it better about the impact on the students.
Yeah. One of the things that I notice with students when we're, there's, and this is anecdotal at best, but I definitely notice them putting more thought into a response that we're going to provide Mr. Willis with than just a response we're looking for at the end of class. When they know that there's that, that another student's going to read it, and they have to put it in terms that make sense to somebody else, we're taking more time to be thoughtful with how we're kind of consolidating the core math idea of the day. You know, the app like this, one of the thing, one of the things that allows me to do as a teacher is I'm able to, with this conferring model and the Best Practices work, the idea is to come up with ways to quickly identify the boundaries of student learning, and so that way you can think about how you would redirect or then further the student learning. And I can do that in real time on an app like Edge Creations, and I don't have to sort through an exit task and have to infer what the student might have thought when completing the exit task, because I have Ashley's running record, I have her inner monologue with me. And a lot of times on a piece of paper, I have to think, I have to assume what I think the student is meaning by drawing that arrow or talking about, you know, what they wrote down. And they're not always complete thoughts. But with an app like Edge Creations on the iPad, with her voice there, along with her keystrokes, I immediately have access to how she saw the whole problem. I never, in this example, expected her to think about it as a half circle, because we hadn't talked about circles. But that's a new learning that I have, just by having her do this, which she wouldn't have put on an exit task. She would have just told me that the angle sum of a triangle is 180 degrees. So, I was, I was, I was further informed as her teacher by being able to have this. And also, we now have it as a public record, I can pull this video up at any time, it's in the cloud, I can share it with other students. A student that wasn't in class this day could go on to a different app that we use called Edmodo, which is our social network, and that video's up there, they can watch it, and they can respond to it and ask questions as well.
So, and this is done with one or two iPads in his classroom, so imagine if everyone was able to document their thinking in this way, and keep it and maintain it and refer back to it over time. So, just one little example. And lastly, because I know you guys were really busy, last week, there was a national day called Digital Learning Day. It wasn't just something we made up in Williston, though I was asked that question.
Oh, there goes Bonnie again, making those things up.
But, so, we used it as a way to take a snapshot of some of the things happening in one day in Williston, and we put it on this new tool that I was exploring called ThinkLink, ThingLink, and I put up our wireless app. And you can see when I press my mouse over the picture, all these little icons that show up, these little tiny dots, and I'll give you the link to this as well. But each one of those is a little comment that somebody dropped, a teacher dropped, about what they did that day with their students, or how they connected with other people. And, you know, this one's exchanged digital Valentine's classes between, between classes with positive messages. There were tons of examples of classes in Williston, Skyping with other classes in Williston, across the two school buildings, that was really exciting. I'll just give you a little sample. So, even in our fax program, students used McDonald's.com to create a day's worth of meals and calculate calories, fats, and sugar, et cetera, et cetera. And many of the times, they put links, so, and, you know, another collaboration we had was between Susie Haas at the 3-4 level and Ted Lethal at the 5-6 level, and they were leaving comments on one another's blogs about their science learning recently. So, it was really fun, and just examples of, we are working toward this goal, and there's really exciting things happening, and more and more every day. So, do you all have questions yourselves about where we are in our thinking, work on the iPads? We are moving forward in, you know, thinking positively that this budget's going to pass, because we really can't wait until it does, there's work to be done. So, we are responding and answering questions as best as we can and sorting out all the details.
I think you did a great job the other night with the discussion.
Yeah.
The other morning, that was really helpful. Even though it was a small group, it, that'll spread. I think that was really helpful.
Yeah, and I think, I think that the, even though it was a small group, that was a great conversation.
Good conversation. So, thanks.
Thank you for being there.
This is very exciting, and thank you. I guess my question goes to equity. I mean, I, my daughter's in Mr. Bailey's class, and it really benefits from his knowledge and his enthusiasm in adopting technology into the classroom. How do we make sure that there's equity of those folks like Mr. Bailey in the other houses, that there'll be teachers who have this interest, this knowledge, that it's being diffused throughout the school? Has there been any thought to that, and how, making sure that there's equity amongst the houses and opportunities that may be available through this new technology?
Yeah. Well, the, the budget for the iPads includes professional development, I mean, it can't not. So, we will be kicking in professional development, and we've already put out a survey to get a sense of where our staff and faculty are right now, and which people are coming into it already with knowledge and skill, and which ones have never touched an iPad before. And, you know, we've got the full range, and it's our plan to work with every single teacher. And one idea that got tossed out last week, with, which I thought was a great one, is to use the Math Studio model in the near future. And so, have teachers within our own buildings teaching other teachers, and going and visiting one another's classrooms to see it actually in play and in action, so that we can build our learning within our faculty. And then there's, you know, discussion about how we're going to structure professional development over the summer as well.
Will the administration be evaluating teachers based upon their integration of technology into their teaching?
We can evaluate, you know, we can take any area of focus that is on the quadrants of the way we evaluate, and let people know that this is what we're going to pay attention to. So, this is what we want to see. And we do that right now. We can say, we want to see math best practices when we go into the classroom, we want to see literacy, or we want to see tech. We want to see literacy or we want to see technology used as part of your lesson. And, you know, we can tell them that ahead of time. And since this is technology, if this goes through, and especially in fifth and sixth grade, we have iPads in everybody's hands, and that would definitely be the focus.
And on the teacher, you used Danielson, correct?
Yes.
There is a technology piece, you know, it's a rubric. And technology is one, there's one part that talks about, you know, when you go to observe a lesson, did you see the use of technology and was it teacher-directed or was it students? You know, so there is that piece that's on the evaluation process.
So, I, I just have one question. So you have this iPad guide, which by the way, I think it's great, I'm looking at the website.
Yep, it's great.
So it's, it's, and I think you touched a little bit on this, but I'm just concerned because not all the teachers are where Jared is, right? And so here we're introducing these tools, we're investing a ton of money on them. And I think kids are going to be all gung ho for it, I would assume. But I don't know that, because not all teachers are where you guys are at, I don't know that they would be as comfortable or as knowledgeable in terms of how to interweave that on a daily basis effectively.
Right.
So, is there going to be like a guide for them?
Actually, we talked about that today. So there will be a guide for teachers. But again, I think a part of my response to your question is it does come down to professional development and open communication and talking and sharing. It's not going to look like the examples Jared gave overnight. You know, this is a process. And it's, it's going to take time. You know, when we first got our first smart boards, we provided professional development for those teachers. And the first thing that the people from the smart company said, that's always a funny thing to say, was pick one portion of your day and start with that. So if you're going to just use this for math, get yourself comfortable with that. And then expand and build and grow. So, you know, the iPads, it's not going to all happen in, with the blink of an eye. It's going to take time and all of us need to remember and understand that.
And, and will picking that whichever section of the day be consistent across the board? So everybody will pick that same section?
No.
And I asked that question.
No, because we're all different and we teach different subjects.
Right, yeah.
So at the fifth and sixth grade, you've got math teachers and then you've got language arts teachers.
Yeah.
You know, in some teams they're generalists and do more than one, but in other teams they're not. So, no, and I wouldn't want to force that on them either.
Yeah.
This needs to, people need to start where they feel most comfortable.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, and, and yeah, you're right, yeah.
And Bonnie, you're sitting down with teams currently, correct? And supporting the technology in, in units at, at like grade level teams and things like that, is that correct?
My concern is, and I expressed this the last time we had this meeting, is, is just that, yes, we have, we have a rubric of technology as something that they are evaluated on. But reality is, depending on who the teacher is, how comfortable they feel with it, I almost feel that some teachers, and, and it's just back to professional development, right? It all goes back to that. But I just feel that we have to make sure that, that it's not just as a check, I am doing a kid blog. I did it, I'm done, I don't have to do anything more about it. Because it's an equity problem.
No, I think that's a good point. I think as we set our technology goals, which is something we did for the first time, we learned a lot about getting very clear about what that looks like and what the expectation is. Rather than saying, I can just check this off and said, I did it. So I think, that was the first time I think any school has kind of done that to say, let's talk about goals. Let's set a goal across a certain level of grade levels. And I think we learned a lot from that about how specific we need to be.
And I, I also want to use us as an example. I remember when Kevin was the only person who brought his iPad. And it didn't take long for all of us sitting here to say, gosh, it's so much easier than, you know, and now look, there's four out of five of us with iPads. And, and we didn't start that way, but we kind of found. We, we recognized, you know,
You can do surface, that's okay.
All the, you know, that we can see what Bonnie's doing here and, you know, and I, and I don't think anybody said to us, oh, the goal we're being a school board member.
And I'm sort of, kind of like glass half full on this in a sense, because I've seen how technology gets adopted in organizations. And my suspicion is that the adoption is, at the beginning especially, will be very rapid in a lot of ways. Different teachers are going to approach it differently because they're, either going to be, you know, apprehensive at first or, or they don't have the experience level. And, you know, I've said this before and it's kind of a cliche, but it's, it is a disruptive technology. It changes everything, just like that. And so when that happens, the kids are going to be pushing the kids, the kids are going to be pushing the teachers, the teachers are going to be pushing each other, they're going to be pushed, it's just, lots is going to gel. And I think you're going to end up finding that you're going to have more challenges around change, around the change, around making sure that, that there's consistency in the use of the apps that you've chosen and, and some of the things around that so that the equity kind of comes in a, kind of a, a good use of the tool across, you know, classrooms. From, you know, the other side of it in a sense.
I think the one thing I would emphasize, because it really hits home, we can all stay within our comfort level. You know, something, we wouldn't even have this on the ballot. We wouldn't even consider, it'd be a lot easier if we didn't.
Yeah.
Really. But this is a disruptive, a disruptor to the education system as it is today. And I mean that in a very positive way. It's going to push us to really look at how are we educating our kids? And how do we really open that up and look at education differently? And the, the thing I keep thinking of, which is the phrase we look at because we talk about time, is 24/7. There's nothing now that says you must be in a classroom to learn because we just gave the kids, if this budget passes, a tool that is pretty powerful in what it can do and how far it can reach out into the world and let them explore anything they want to. Well, that's pretty disruptive education because the idea is that they can learn anytime they want. It's not, I have to wait till I get back to class. They can do it anytime they want. They can take it out and really research anything they're interested in, like we do sometimes. I hate to say it, but when you're trying to figure out, who was that, what was the last movie that actor or actress was in? And all those kinds of things that all of a sudden we pull out a device immediately and look it up. And they're going to be like that. They're going to be great access people for finding out information, knowledge, and anything they want to know about, anything. So I think that the idea of disruption of education is probably the most positive thing we can say about this. It will disrupt education.
The one piece I'm just thinking about is how important it will be to inform parents along the way about what their students are doing or should be doing and what a big piece that, that's going to be.
There's a lot of important pieces. And, you know, I mean, we're, we're exploring them all as, you know, as we speak. But, you know, one of the things that I have heard from a number of parents is why the iPad, why not a laptop? And, you know, one response is the iPad is cheaper. And the, whoever it was that responded today to that link said, no, the iPad's not necessarily cheaper. But compared to a quality laptop, I think it is. But aside from that, the iPad has fewer pieces that are going to break and need support. But most importantly, I feel that along the lines of what we were just talking about in terms of disrupting education, if we were to get more laptops, then we're going to just keep going and doing what we've been doing. And it, it, education needs to change. And if we're going to continue to use our laptops to word process and do research, then we're still at that substitution level. And we need to move our schools forward.
If you look, if you look at time, I see the laptop as something where I can, I can use that in my teaching as an educator and I can use it for about a half day because that's what the battery life is going to provide me with. I cannot teach students in the afternoon on the same laptop I'm teaching students in the morning with. And they can't, taking it home is, they'd have to recharge it on the bus to get it, to use it at home. The iPad is a 24/7 device that they can use at any time and the learning can move with them. The other piece that we talked about at the parent breakfast the other day, which was delicious and catered, thank you, was for me, the instant on access. And I use math to back that up. And I said, if you just figure on the conservative side that a laptop takes two minutes to boot up, and my experience is it takes at least five to get a kid logged in. But if you just go with two, and you give me, versus an iPad, two minutes a day logging into a laptop for 180 days means six hours of math class a year, logging into the device. You give me six more hours of teaching time with that student because they have an iPad. And I can, they let them take their learning with them after three o'clock, before eight o'clock. So they're picking up six hours of FaceTime with their teacher. And then they're picking up limitless time, you know, unquantifiable amounts of learning opportunities outside the school day. And to me, the fact that it comes in still less expensive than a laptop, it's, it's, it would be tough to sell me as an educator on something different, to give a student a device that could be as transformative at the same level of cost with the same level of opportunity for full day learning.
I have one question, sorry, just a few things. Are there iPads for third and fourth graders in Williston Central?
There are not at this point. Someone asked that question yesterday at our faculty meeting. And I do have this little idea in the back of my head that we'll see what we can do to get a cart for the three, fours. Because, you know, here we have it at the K2 and then there's this void. And that's not right. And so, you know, that's a discussion within the technology department about what we can finagle and how to swing that. But I think that's a, a need. It's, there have been fewer teachers at that level who have talked to me about the desire to work with iPads. And that's one reason we started at the K2 is that's where I was hearing the most. People saying, you know, I want to try this, I want to do this, can we do? And, and that's one reason we started there. Plus, we knew we could have shared iPads at that age level. Whereas once you get to middle school, this is a personal device. So, yes, we will be exploring that as well. It's a good question.
Thank you, Bonnie, thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
You're very great.
That's great. All right.
Okay.
So we'll move on to 5.2, our principal's report.
So I wanted to talk, I, I included a lot of information, so you can ask questions about that. The, the one thing I wanted to look at is just a little bit of our NECAP scores as they came out because there are a couple of pieces that are kind of hidden you may not know about. Number one is that, you know, we stayed pretty much the same in reading and math. Our scores are good, but they're not changing the way we would like them to. We'd like to see improvements every year. Our writing went up by nine points though across the board, which is significant if you're above five. The place that you can't see, and I was looking at this today, our two subgroups. Our, in last year's testing, our range in the subgroups around IEP students taking the test in reading especially was 19 on the low side. 19% of the students either met or exceeded it at one grade level to the high of 38% of students met or exceeded it at a grade level. This is just IEP students. The range this year is, the low is 30% of our students at one grade level met or exceeded, up to 51% as the high met or exceeded of students who are on IEP. So you can see that there's quite a bit of growth there immediately. Even though it's a different group, we've been pushing hard on this area. Our SES students is even better than that. Because we went from, on the low end, the lowest score on any of the grade levels on SES, this third to eighth grade, 36%, the lowest this year was 53%. The highest was 79, the highest this year is 83. So you can see that more and more of our students that were identified for, which is IEP and SES students, are beginning to really pick up the skills. And this has been where our emphasis has been through, you know, tier two intervention and summer school and really trying to make sure they're getting extra help. And you're seeing movement on the scores. Now, it is a different group, you just have to.
Wait, did you say 83 when you meant 38 or 36?
No, it's 83.
No, but it's 36 to 79.
36 to, 36 to 79 moved from 53 to 83.
Okay.
So you can see that the whole, the lowest one was 36 the year before the range. Now the lowest range is 53. So it's shifting. And we can also track some of it over time, just to watch the same group to see how it's doing. But anyway, we looked at that and said, you know, that's for the first time, and that's in reading, which is one of the things we said, well, why? You know, because our emphasis is in math, so why are they changing their reading? Because once you can read, you can practice. And you're going to practice because now you can access books of any kind, magazine. And so it will be natural for you, once you are a reader, to read. Whereas even if you get to know math, it isn't like I'm going to go out and practice my math. You know, but you will practice reading and you will use it to gain knowledge on a regular basis. Read the magazines you like, read the books you want, things like that. And so there's likely to be more practice. So once you open the door, it really opens up the door to just plain knowledge that you can gain anything you want. To iPads. I mean, even reading on iPads or reading the information that you're getting from it. It just opens up the world, literally, when you can read.
Now, these are outlier numbers. Are you seeing the majority though, a shift in the majority of SES and, and IEPs making that kind of change?
Well, what it means is the outliers are moving up. Both outliers are moving upward.
Right, but if I was to take, eliminate the outliers, where's the, is the core group, is a majority of this group moving up the scale?
Yeah, I would say they, they are. I'm not saying it's, everything's, you know, beautiful and it's all working. One of the things you'll find is every grade level has its own personality. And that's what we see. We can say, you know, this grade level, for whatever reason, is scoring lower at the third grade level than the grade level before it, and they follow a pattern. And even though they may go up, you can see the pattern. And it has something to do with that group of students, which could be 120 students, and their literal makeup. And we've had other classes that are way up. I mean, we've had classes in writing that are way up there, I think in the 90s in writing, in general. That 90% of the students, I think in, in this case, passed the writing. Either, you know, met or exceeded in the writing standard for a whole grade level.
For your eighth graders.
Yeah, the eighth graders. The eighth graders scored 92% in writing.
That's incredible.
Yeah, that's incredibly high. So what you get is this difference in grade levels and some of it is the makeup of the grade level.
But that is one reason increasingly, when I show you data for the whole SU in the spring, in April, we tend now that we have data over many, many years to look at cohorts of kids as they travel through. It's more valid. This gives us an indication, we're doing something right, especially, you know, in the areas of IEP and SES. But it is a great thing and more, more reliable for us to be tracking a group of kids over time.
Right. So the thing I'll mention on drama, we could, so I had the letter, of course, I left it on my desk because I was reading through the, the points. And we can look at drama, but if we're going to look at the schedule.
Did you know it wasn't in the packet, drama?
No, because I was just going to talk.
Oh, okay.
Oh, did you get the letter? I thought we put the letter in.
No. No, it was just the school threat assessment. The drama piece was missing, so maybe you can email it to us.
I mean, I think Jackie mentioned it briefly. I think that, didn't the board get like?
Yeah, no, we got, we were copping on Jackie's email.
Yeah.
And so what we were looking at though is, we can look at drama really and relook at that. The school plays themselves run about $10,000 to put those on. And what we have to bet on, that's why we raised the price, is that we bring in enough revenues to offset it. And we did. So that's one thing. So it would say that, one of the suggestions says we do two-school plays. That would be $20,000 to do that. And so, you know, we look at that and say, do we really want to do that? But I would like to look more holistically. That one of the things we look at, and I think it's what you're asking for in scheduling, is if we tinker with the schedule, expect to get small results. That's what you're going to get. We really have to look, look out of the normal box of how we look at things. And the first things Molly and I were talking about, I said, Molly, what if we just double the amount of time that students are working in, in science, in mathematics, in technology? Which is double the time. And do you think that would cause a result? I think we all know the answer. It would cause a huge result because now we're doubling the amount of learning time they're doing in those areas. The problem is the schedule won't support that kind of disruptive change to say, let's really do this. Let's just do this, unless we can access time after school.
Have them sleep over.
But the idea is that we would get done at about 4:30.
Isn't, isn't, I mean, that's what we keep talking about, a more flexible day to allow for these types of things, right?
So I think we're working on a lot of different ideas around that. And, and one of the things I keep looking at is if we make small moves, we're going to get small results. We do have to be bigger and bolder in some areas.
Well, I think we need to do two things at the same time. We need to focus on the short term and in the long term.
Right.
And I think looking at the schedule to address short-term improvements is a definite must, I think. Because we cannot wait. In order to get to flexible changes in the agreement on the contract for the teachers, we're talking about years. I don't think we can afford to wait for years.
I do, I do believe the superintendents are rallying around. I do, I do believe the superintendents are rallying around.
Right, they came out at the ESU meeting. We're not that far away.
Yeah, we're not that far away.
We can't afford to wait that long. We have a problem right now.
We're the only school that has a side agreement with the association to run Spark. Where we can run a flexible schedule. We're the only school that has that. And so that allows us to do it right now with their support. And so I think what we want to do is look at, which is the schedule, I think there's, there's a lot of issues on the table. Number one is, what's a, what's a well-rounded education? What kinds of experiences do we want our students to have before they leave? That's one. And then the second part is, how can we more flexibly use our day and even the time after school? What kinds of activities would make sense to happen that time period so that we could put maybe more time into core time? You know, and into science, math and technology, really to say, this is what we're going to push hard. And then we have to look at the disruptors because what you're mentioning is music is one disruptor. We have a disrupted kind of schedule which says that we disrupt one kind of learning experience to have another. That's what it looks like.
Right.
You've got kids after school wanting to take basketball and soccer.
Right, but 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 you know what? I think this is what I think is our obligation. Our obligation is to point at the parents who don't recognize what is happening inside the school. Because in reality, most parents just say that they're in school, they hear music, they get math, they get English, they get Spanish, they get this, they get that, they get it. Okay, how, 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 how much are you willing to stretch to get a quality education? And I think personally, the email that Terry Keem sent, what do we want to be known for? Are we, are we producing actors? I'm not saying that's all we're doing.
Known for options, you know, that we have a variety of.
But the thing, though, Deb, I'm sorry, I think, I think we're just, we're stretched too thin. We can't be good at everything.
I think one thing, Gianna, that you're getting at is like this sort of the ubiquitous conversation at the administrative table and throughout CSSU. It comes up continually. I wouldn't want you to think, and you probably don't, but I wouldn't want you to think that that isn't on everyone's radar. What comes off, what stays in, what gets expanded? How can we do STEM and integrate math, science, engineering so that we can get more time for those? So I think the business of each school to work out gradually, which Williston's done an incredible job of so far. How to make the best of math period and and expand on it because we do have to for eighth grade algebra, for example. And how to add on for bridges which went from a fifty minute period to a seventy five. That your, your, that's what your building administrators and their teaching teams, that's their job is to figure that out. And to know that it is very much on their radar. And you're right, the big changes, you know, those will take some time. And it's a challenge. It is such a challenge.
Yeah, and believe me, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not on your radar.
No, I didn't hear it that way.
Shoes at all. But I do want to say something, and I'm just going to cling into drama for one reason, just for one reason. I am not against drama. I actually like drama and I consider it a very enriching experience. Let me make that clear. However, I do believe that the way it currently is offered is incredibly disruptive. And I'm not saying this out of the blue. I actually spoke with some teachers. I spoke with some parents. We've heard from some parents who have quite a bit of concerns and very valid concerns about it. So let's start little then, to have some immediate changes that will ultimately free time for the children who actually need it.
I I also think a voice that needs to be heard are the children because I think, you know, I I know many children that if you ask them about their experiences in the upper grades in their houses, they will tell you about the experience they had in the drama project productions.
On the flip side, Holly, I also spoke to others who say, I hate it. But I, so I don't like to be on the stage, but because I have to be involved in it, I have to be behind the stage handling lights. And what bothers me enormously is that when the play comes along, they actually are taken out of the entire school day for two or three or five days in a row. That is not right. I'm sorry.
And I know for my kids, if you talk to them, even though they were not on the stage, they were stagehands or had very small parts. They will say that that was one of, one of their best experiences.
Right, so we're going to have comments all around the spectrum. There's no doubt about that.
That's why I think it's the choice of having.
But it's not a choice. It is not a choice. That's the problem. It's a mandated, two plays a year, is it by house? How is it? Okay, that's the wrong choice of word. But that's what, that's what we do. Mandated is a wrong choice of word. I don't know how to put it, but it happens.
Jared left his Sterling House play after it was over to come here tonight.
That's what they were doing? Okay, I think we're kind of diving down into the minutia. There's one issue.
I think so, too. We have a big.
But I will say only one thing because I have very mixed feelings about the drama issue and I really don't think this is really the time and place to try and solve it. But it is, it is, it is heavily integrated into the house curriculums. And it, there is a, there is a perception amongst the large number of parents that I know of and myself, too. I'll say this, that it is, there's a lot of time spent on it and it is not, it may not be mandated. But I think it's very difficult for the children or parents who don't want their children to be involved in it not to be. I mean, it's just so heavily integrated into the curriculum for good reasons. But it, it, it is, it does take that large chunk of time out, you know, and focuses it there.
And has program council looked at it and had conversations and?
No, and that's where we would head with it.
Well, that's, that was kind of what I was thinking, too.
As part of the scheduling question.
To consider that, too.
Look at that and say.
Scheduling and educational experiences. So are there ways to make it?
It's kind of a lightning rod kind of thing because there's, I know there's a lot of opinion around it in the community and in the faculty. We need to have these open discussions.
So I'd be curious to have program council really look at it and pros and cons and educational experiences and time versus.
Which you could say about a host of other things, you know, field trips, you know, the times around holiday periods. I mean, looking at how we efficiently use our time probably is something that, and probably happens all the time.
Like I said, lightning rod.
Yeah, and and basically, I don't, I think it's a good experience. I'm not saying by the number of things that are done, but by the fact that before students leave, they should have an experience. That's it.
They should have an experience.
Now, what that translates into for how many times, how many experiences? I mean, I would talk to the teachers to say, okay, let's weigh out what's on the table. What kinds of experiences do we want kids to have? And we know we don't have enough time. So how do you move things around? You know, how do you move things around to make time?
Did the program council get a copy of Ms. Littlefield's email? Because I thought her email was incredibly thoughtful.
No, it came afterwards.
And and I just want to make sure that we don't toss that into, in it like an empty bucket. Because she has a lot of really, really valuable suggestions.
And I don't mean to be trite, but since we've been talking about disruptive technologies, the concept of the school play may very well soon become the concept of small productions of school films.
And we have a little bit of that going on right now.
Well, what it means is, is it, just, I mean, not saying this is what we do, but you know, now you have the potential of maybe not having to have to stage a large expensive production. There may still want to do that for the kids to want that experience, but other kids could get a very similar experience doing things with technology, working in a different way.
That would be very cool.
And I think the, what you're pointing out is that we only touching, if this goes through, we're only touching the tip of how it could change education. You know, we don't even know yet because we.
So I don't want to belittle the issue, just that.
Drama could change.
But the, I think the issue for me is, you know, as I I start listening to pieces of it, it's the bigger picture of by the time they leave Williston, especially the middle school. Yeah, what kinds of experiences do we want for them, though? So that we want definitely, you know, I think if we listen to the governor, which I believe in, I mean, it's around technology, math, science, that we really have to excel in those areas. But, you know, one thing it talks about is if you don't have the arts, you don't necessarily make as good an engineer because of your design or lack of it, you know, just your knowledge of design. As, and that's why a lot of schools are now saying it is, is STEM, which includes arts also. Because you need that for design. It's just part of it now. It's not separate. It's a creative side of the brain. So I think that what we have to do is kind of look at the whole thing. And I don't mean we're going to wait years. I mean, one of the things is that we're trying to work on this right now to find out what does this mean? What can we consider and trying to open up the day as much as possible. The one thing I'd say, and I'll.
Then we're on to school threat assessment.
So the one thing I'd say is that when we start negotiating and looking with teachers, and I heard this from a lawyer. He said, do not start with the contract and the language. Start with a vision of education. And once you understand what you want for education, then start talking about the language of how does this contract support that vision? Otherwise, you've got it backwards.
And we've started the conversation small and it just, I think we spoke last time how we were opening it up and they needed a Williston rep. And Kevin did agree to.
Yes.
Be that person, so.
Yes.
You're a good man.
I, I, well, I, I, I may need, I may need to bow out of it because of personal, potentially personal conflicts.
Understood.
So I'll let you all know at the next meeting whether that's an issue or not.
If that is, let me know. You know, juggling the time will be an issue for me.
Tuesday afternoon at four or something. It's an early.
It, it actually may come down to this board's comfort level more than anything else, so.
All right, shall we move on to school threat assessment?
So anyway, I just, I, I put together a document because I know there are people that talk about that. We did put, both doors now are, have video cameras and magnetic locks on them. And I think that's a huge improvement of, I think, in everybody's mind of just security. And I know parents feel really good about that. So it's a buzzer system like every other school. And I think if you come in, you know what it's like. And I think it's one part. It's not the answer answer. It's one part. I think the two things I mentioned on the bottom are bigger parts, which is how does the, you know, how does making sure that we know what's going on within the community because, you know, there's a lot of things that we know about sometimes that are going on. And the, the threat assessment is how is that going to affect the school? How could it affect the school? And the other part is making sure that being safety conscious is looked at as a very positive thing within the system. And that that's with everybody, you know, faculty members, students, and they, you know, if they saw something, they would know enough to come forward immediately. And that's a cultural change from we don't tattle kind of thing to, no, this is about safety. This is about everybody's safety, safety and being safe. And the other thing we're doing is we're working, we have our next meeting on Friday. We work with the state police, the local police, and also the fire department. And and we will review some of the drills we've been talking about. We've been doing this rate, this cycle of drills. And I think what they have talked about, and we talked about the same thing, is we have to look at some odd times where it's more difficult to manage the situation. And we're going to run tabletops around that to start with. For instance, lunch, recess, all the kids are outside. You know, those kinds of things. And what do you do in that situation? And the other thing they had looked at when we had our first meeting is, what are the most likely things to happen? We have some things, we can practice certain drills, which is fine, we will do that. But what are the most likely things that we will run into at school? And we ask the police and state police, what kinds of things do you really respond to more on a regular basis? And it is domestic disputes. That's what it is, you know, and I think we knew that, you know, because that's what we get involved in sometimes also. So it's really trying to manage us working together with them. And also, we're doing drills with them and also to look at what are the things we need to really be good at handling? Because it's much more of a high priority because it's more, more likely to happen than some of the other things we might practice for.
So from the literature that I I read, and I, thank you very much for putting this together. I think that certainly addresses a lot of the questions I have. I want to forward this to a couple of the parents that had contacted me that have particular interest and expertise in this area. But but the last bullet, I think, is something as a board member I would like to get follow up with from the administration. Because as I understand in reading the literature, not so much a chain of command, but making sure that the public, the teachers, the students know who they can contact when they sense that there may be a threat. So that the, the system can do what it's set up to do is very important. Because without that communication piece, then you're not, the threat assessment team isn't getting the information to to react to. And so if, if you could get back to us on that so that, that we have a clear picture of that, that would be really helpful.
I think the other thing that I thought you were going to get at, at the last meeting, we were talking about this, is it really is a community issue. Because if community members see something going on, who do they report to? Who do they call? Is it just the fire department or should that be really advertised and made very public about, you know, we're all here for everybody's safety? You know, here's some lines or people that you should call immediately if you have, and maybe it isn't the nine one one number. Maybe it's a, you know, because it may not be that kind of emergency. It depends on what's going on. And I think we'll have this conversation on Friday, you know, to say, what about this other part? The communication within just the community itself and keeping each other safe. And how do you do that? I mean, you could hear something at a movie theater, you know, just as easily as you could at school.
And I, and agreed and a hundred percent, but this is different. So to the extent that, you know, we, the school have a duty. A separate legal duty and assuring that not necessarily for law enforcement purposes, but that there's a therapeutic avenue to get to these kids who need help. That, that, that was more of where I was directed.
That information came from what we're currently doing, some of the things we're already doing. It also came from a threat assessment based on schools by the CIA and FBI. I mean, it was another article that was concentrated on what do they know about things that have happened at school? What I can do is I can bring that article or send it to you because it's, it's very good. I mean, they were doing profiling of what do the people look like that, you know, this is really happening and the fact that there is none.
Right, and and so I guess what I'm more looking at is not more research, but more knowing what we're going to do as a school to to communicate to the, to our teachers, to our faculty, to the community, our students, parents. If we think there's a kid in trouble who is, you know, got a, a journal that's got some really disturbing things, who do we contact? So that the system can get into place. And how do we publish that? How do we reach out to people? So that becomes part of the general knowledge in the community.
And still protect people's confidentiality. That's a big, big challenge.
Absolutely.
It's kind of along those lines, just from a preparedness standpoint as well, more, more from an education to parents, I think. Because I know, I know as a parent, we do drills, right? But when they happen, what type of drills happen? What is, what communication is actually told to the children about those drills? Because I'm going to tell you, my, my daughter told me the other day that they had a lockdown. And that they had that lockdown because the teachers were in the hallway and maybe they fell down. And this is, this is literally how she was telling me. She fell down and so kids had to stay in their classrooms so that the teacher wouldn't be embarrassed. I'd rather you tell that to my child as opposed to a guy is running in the hallway killing people, right? But she just caught me by surprise like, oh, I guess that, that's what it must be.
And that's one of the scenarios, you know, if somebody had a medical health emergency in the hallway.
We've actually happened, that's actually happened twice within the last two years. Where one of our own faculty members had a medical emergency and we didn't do a lockdown. We did a clear the halls.
Yeah, clear the halls. I don't know.
And that was real. I mean, the ambulance came.
And so your child could easily have been told that. That's a legitimate scenario.
That's real.
Right. But but I would love, I think as, it would be good. As a parent, to know that this is happening so that when she comes home, she says, this, oh, yeah, I found out about it and this is why. Because also, that's also, back to your point, Walter, this is a community thing. We can also be the, the, the springing boards to educate our children's within our houses.
The tricky part is if most of them are domestic disputes, you don't necessarily want parents to have like full knowledge of the.
I'm talking about drills. I'm talking about the school drills, just timing when this is, this is happening. We don't need to know when, but this is coming along. This is why we're doing it.
Even if a communication goes on, particularly after, hey, this is what we did today. This is why and it was successful.
Or even just letting them know that every, every month we're required by state law.
The other thing I'm telling you, the other thing that happened, which I found very funny, was, and luckily it was a funny thing. In Allenbrook, I believe Mr. Turco was doing popcorn in the microwave and they charred and all the alarms went off. And the firemen came over and so all the kids were actually in drill mode. So my. So my daughter came home laughing about the charred popcorn. But I, I would have liked to.
Yeah.
But I would have liked to hear that, just so that I know, yeah, it was, you know, this, you know what I mean? It's communication.
Usually the kids know what happened.
I would say, yeah.
Kids, kids, but we should know.
The, the other piece is, I think kids always say to you, you know, well, was that just a practice or was that real? And, and you want them to take it all seriously, like, well, you know, it was, it was a clear the halls, and that's what we do here, and here's what we do when that happens.
But to be consistent about communication, this is what I think parents need to know. Right?
All right, are we on to five point three, second quarter financial management report? Is it our packet? Does anyone have questions for Walter?
Can you, Walter, can you just give me an idea of the breakdown of the eighty-seven thousand in, in over expenses? Just, were there three or four areas, or is it just, there was a hundred different areas with five hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars there? If you were to say here are the five big cost drivers of.
Special education, period.
Okay.
That's it. I mean, if we get students, this budget does not have a lot of money in it for outside placements. We have been hit with about three of them. And that has put a hole in that part pretty quickly.
And so how exposed are we then to the budget we're hopefully about to pass?
Well, what you hope is what you're seeing is that in other areas we're doing well. That's why it's showing.
The revenues are up a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
The revenues are up, so what you look at is the total, you know, budget picture, because there's always, there's exposure on the special education side always, because you can't reject that.
But now that we have arguably consumers of, of those special education needs, have we accounted for that in our upcoming budget?
Yes, we've actually put in two outside placement slots, which we don't have in this one.
Okay.
And even those are not, right now, they're not necessarily accounted for, students. They're safety precautions to say.
It's anticipatory, right?
Just anticipating that it, there may be something here. So that's in this new budget that is going to be voted on. We put that in just knowing that there could be, you know, we were overexposed this year, so we, we put that in for next year. And that's probably, that's most of it right there. I mean, there's a few other things, but I think that's where you're, we're getting hit with most of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So food service.
Food service is not doing well, it's simple as that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I was talking to, you know, Bob Mason about this just before we came in, and said, well, I think CSSU had asked that there be a study done of food service across the schools, because except for Shelburne, Williston, Heinsberg, and Charlotte are, are all the same. You know, and the high school's different because it's on a cart and that sort of thing. But all of them are in trouble right now, you know, and we have new standards, and we have higher prices of food, and we have fixed labor costs, and we haven't changed the rate. And we haven't, one of the things we talked about also is that the reimbursement, you know, we had to support it, it's fifty thousand dollars. It's been there for, at fifty thousand dollars for a number of years, and, you know, we have to decide, kind of, is that enough? I mean, everything else has been going up, and we've left that flat. And I think that, you know, our food service director is really talented at really using everything wisely. And the other question would be is, do we have to change the menu? Do we have to offer less?
I, I, I have to tell you that I actually sent an email, because I looked at the cafeteria. Now that I'm in the food committee, what are we calling this, food service committee? So, I, I, I looked at the statement closer today, and I sent Bob a whole bunch of questions. And there's a lot to be concerned about, a lot.
Yes.
So, I can CC you, I, I did, I actually just sent it to Bob. Do you guys want me to send you a copy of what I sent to him?
It's up to you.
Well, and I think the committee's met, you've met twice, is that right?
Well, I, I've only been there once. The first time around, I think.
There weren't many people.
Yeah, exactly. So we won't, we had one meeting last week, and, and nothing really much has been done. It's more setting the stage and understanding where we're all standing.
My suggestion would be for the benefit of your, letting that group do their work is keep it there for now.
Report, right?
And then report as you get information. We can add it to the agenda. When, when are you meeting again, Giovanni?
I think he said, did he say, well, they want to come back any, right?
I thought next month.
Yeah, so that makes sense that they'd be meeting in March.
I can't remember, I have to take a look at my calendar.
So maybe we can tentatively put it on the agenda for next month, and if you have any information.
Yes, yeah.
Share out then.
Yes.
Because he did, Paul did say.
Yes, he's the chair now.
So Walter, I guess.
The free-for-all book.
I'm sorry. The, I guess the only concern I have on this food service statement is that there's a statement about, you know, it's been a difficult quarter with the food costs and obligations, and regular increases in salary and benefits. I guess I question why regular increases in salary and benefits is affecting this, shouldn't we have planned for that?
I, I don't know that part.
That one kind of jumped out at me, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I, I can say that affects the cost of personnel is if there's anybody out for any longer period of time. That they get the benefit of being covered, and we have to hire somebody.
We have to hire someone else, okay.
To do it, and that, and, you know, the way the, I think, if you don't, I mean, realize the budget is so tight anyway. It's based on personnel, the cost of food, how many meals you can sell.
Yeah, I, I.
You know, that's all there is, I mean, there's really not a lot there in what you offer, and.
Which is why it jumped out at me, that's why I was concerned.
But that's what happens, and, and the other thing that will come up in rotations is, February is not a good month, because we lose a whole week of revenue.
Yeah.
And guess what, April's just like that, you know, so there's.
So it's not going to get better, great. Okay, those are my questions for the financials.
All right. Uh, we'll move on to five point four, the CSSU debrief. The outcomes, food service, and legis, um, yeah, the common topic. Any comments about our CSSU meeting? I know Elaine reported that the outcomes have gone, that committee met, I was on that committee. Were you on that committee as well, Deb?
And Deb.
Um, it now, the outcomes are, have now gone back to the administrators. So, and then after that, it's my understanding, it will then come back to the board, is that correct?
They've already been to the administrative table twice, and then she brought together Megan, myself, and herself, and we went through that and kind of sharpened it a little bit. And then it goes, I think, to board chairs Friday, and then back to the administrators, and then back to the SU board. I think that's the process.
So questions or comments about legislative updates, the language program? All right, so five point five, FAPAC.
Saint George gave us seven thousand dollars for the Williston Win campaign. They gave us, I think it was five last year, and they increased it. Which is really helping with grants, that'll help next year.
That's great.
The money we took in was low. So what they're doing, they're going to do is survey the parents to kind of get their take on the campaign, and their feelings about it, and what's working and what's not working. So that's going to be going out, I think, after the February break.
How shy, like, as far as your goal, where, where are you compared to last year?
I'm trying to remember, it was, hmm, I don't remember exactly, but it was, it was quite a bit lower.
Half, I think.
Yeah.
Wow, half.
A lot. So again, you know, just trying to get the message out there that you're really paying upfront for the cost of trips. And I think the houses have been really good about saying this trip is sponsored by Williston Wins, so you haven't had to pay. So, just getting the word out, but also hearing from parents, why we're not getting bigger numbers.
True.
I think it'll be helpful. In January, Walter had a great meeting on placement, which was really well-attended. It was a night meeting, the discussion was great about just the, what people's thoughts were around placement. So I thought that was, Giovanni, you were there?
I thought it was a phenomenal meeting, because it, it actually, not only did it, it was very clear to parents what, how complicated the process is, how many moving parts come into the decisions that are being made. But then I think the idea of making, um, uh, study cases, how do we call those?
Changes, you mean those change request things?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so what he basically did is he came up with different scenarios, and then everybody in the room got assigned to a group. And as a group, within your little groups, you had to decide, okay, this is student A who has A, B, C, and D requests, and it landed here, so would you change him or not? And it was just very interesting to see parents have, you know, conversations, oh, no way, no way, no way. So just bringing it down to, like, decision-making makes it very clear to parents how you can't really, you know, it's not as easy as it sounds. So I congratulate you, because I think that was really very good.
We learned a lot.
Yeah.
And we're going to change some of our procedures based on the information we picked out. We're going to be very conservative when it comes to change, because that's what people basically said.
Yes.
Every one of those cases, they were very conservative.
Yes. It was a great meeting.
So, I think, thank you.
Okay, and our next meeting is tomorrow morning at eight fifteen. And Bonnie set up two iPad meetings, one was the other morning, what morning was it?
It was Monday morning.
Monday morning. And the other one, I think, is next Tuesday, the twentieth?
I can tell you're recording.
It is the twentieth at six thirty, at Williston Central, and that's a chance for parents to come and ask questions about the iPads.
Yep, that's right.
But I think the fact that she has the link on the web for questions is wonderful.
I think the fact that she's just keeping the lines of communication open is so meaningful, you know, because there is no,
Right.
I didn't know, you didn't ask me, I think that's wonderful.
Yeah, and the discussion was wonderful the other day, a lot of good issues and things to think about.
Lots of tough questions asked, that, you know, good, good, good conversations.
Okay, and then on town meeting day, right? March fifth is the variety show, FAP fundraiser, at six thirty.
Hmm.
So, FYI.
That's put on by the FAPAC?
Yeah.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
That's great.
Great, all right, so we'll move on to discussion matters, six point one, policy review, there's none. Um, six point two, communication board corner.
Nice job.
Nice job on your article.
Thank you, thank you for your input, I appreciate it. Hopefully it'll get published in, in its entirety.
Sure.
Now, I'm just curious if there's anything more we want to do around communication for the budget? You know, we have this flyer.
When does this flyer go out? Is it going in?
When does it go out?
I think it's next week.
So it's not, does it go out in the, in the?
We try to stay away from vacation week, because we know a lot of people are not around. So, I think it'll be in next week's paper, we just sent it in this week.
And that was the push to get Josh in the, because if it's in the vacation one, nobody reads it. But is there anything more we want to do around? I know in South Burlington, we're doing a big push around getting people to get their absentee ballots, if they're going out of town or wanting to vote. You know, we have a big link on our district web, webpage about here's how you can do it online, to get an absentee ballot. And I didn't know if, either as a district or just as a school, that we wanted to put out information to people about, here's what you need to do, you know, maybe an electronic email?
No.
I, I, well, two things, I'm not sure we should be having this discussion right now, in our official capacity. I would be very interested in continuing this discussion in our individual capacities.
An executive session?
No, no.
No, okay. We, we can't have a discussion individually with all of us in a room.
Well, no, it's not school business. We're, we're not going to engage, we are, we will be engaging ourselves as individuals, not about school business. That's the whole point, that I'm, the distinction I'm trying to draw.
Right, no, I'm not saying to convince people to vote for the budget, I'm saying to convince people to vote.
To vote, yeah, yeah.
I, I understand, and I'm drawing a different distinction. And, and I want to engage in that discussion, and that's why I'm making my comments the way I'm making them, in a very circumst, hopefully circumst, way.
I mean, we as, as a board can convince people to vote, vote on our Facebook page, or the school can't, they can just, I mean, we can say vote yes for the budget, because it's our budget.
Absolutely, absolutely, without using school resources.
Okay.
Have people heard anything from people about the budget, any comments or?
It's going to be tight, that's what I think. I think people are, you know, concerned, they're used to not seeing, you know, this increase, this kind of an increase from us. We've been doing a great job at holding our costs down, but we've gotten to a point where we can't. And I think if anything we can do to, to do to help the situation is to continue to communicate the reasons why this budget is coming in as a five percent increase. Because they're valid reasons, they're good reasons. There's, I think, all, anytime I've had a conversation with someone who has said to me, I'm really concerned, I think it's a, it's a lot to ask for, and I engage them in the reasoning, at the end of the conversation, they're like, okay, I understand. So that, that gives me hope that if we can communicate that, you know, individually, you know, collectively, via the observer articles and things like that, you know, this flyer will help greatly.
Josh, do you think some of the questions you're being asked are answered in this?
Oh, yeah.
Josh, excuse me.
It's okay, no, no, yeah, no, this, this, most of the questions are answered in this, probably all of them.
Poor Kevin, I'm always messing up here.
I answered many, whatever.
Well, and Josh is loving it. I'm sorry.
It's a, inside wardrobe. Yeah, so, we just need to keep championing the, the budget.
And I also think, I haven't looked at, I know you sent the budget PowerPoint, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. But having that at town meeting and telling that story of the overtime, and looking at other places like Heinsberg and Charlotte, who are in our same district, but in a much higher bracket.
I think, you know, I, and I think that's why I want you to look at, we got to try this one out and see if we want to, we, we're going to be on TV on Friday night, doing the budget, and we have a PowerPoint, and we're telling the story that way, and then we'll talk afterwards to see if that seemed to be effective. The, the real thing that I looked at this and said, if we stay at four point one eight percent, I mean, one, a couple of things I always look at, number one is, I don't like to ask people to spend more money and get less. As a taxpayer, I never liked that, and it happened in my town all the time. We want you to pay five percent more, but you're going to get less education, and less resources than you had before, and we're going to cut programs. And so, you're getting value. I mean, we're adding on, it's less than one percent is the growth rate of what we're adding on. But the reality that people may not realize, there is no place to go on this budget. I mean, if we have to reduce it, it will be programs this time, because there's just no place else to go. You know, we've been, this one, you know, the baseline's four point one eight percent.
I saw an article with regards to the monpillar budget, which I thought was pretty effective. There was a graphic showing the last three or four years of the budget increases, and then, and showing their current year, which is, I think, about eight percent. And I, I think that was an important story to tell, that, you know, this school board, the administration's held the line below inflation, I think.
Absolutely.
For the last, what, three or four years?
Now, it's last, including this budget, the average inflation rate has been one point four five, the average budget, one point four five percent a year. That's all.
And in some ways, one could argue, we've, we've created our own problems, because being so tight in years, we're now having to pay for something.
Exactly.
That's right. So, that's why I said the question, because we, we have different critical friends looking at it, and said, why didn't you do it again then? I mean, why couldn't you do it again? Because we've done it for five years in a row, we can't do it again, right? There's nothing left, without programs.
I think our public doesn't realize that, nor do they realize that when you do that year after year, you end up needing to magnify the budget.
So, without advocating a yes or no vote, how do we get, where, where are the critical voting populations to get this message to in the next three weeks?
Well, I think, I think the challenge is the people who, who wouldn't support it are probably the people who don't have children in the school system. Typically, your parents are the ones who are going to support it, because at that point, they're the consumers, and get to experience it firsthand.
So, again, without advocating how people should vote, at least for the purpose of this discussion, is there get out the vote activities in a nonpartisan way that we want to facilitate? Maybe with the help of FAP?
I've gone in the past to the senior centers, and spoken to them.
Yeah, we've had school board members in the past to go out and.
But that's not our target audience.
Sure it is.
The senior centers?
The senior centers?
Absolutely, our, I think our prime target audience. Those are seniors on fixed incomes.
With no children.
With no children in the school system, or who, who vote.
They are also typically the ones that show up at town meeting, so we'll have that opportunity, when, I, I would say, at least half our population at town meeting is.
But I think we're just talking about two different things. I mean, everybody is our target audience, really, because everybody's a voter. But I think what you were trying to say is, well, we need to make sure.
It's informed voters, is really how I look at it.
Well.
Who are inclined to actually go out and vote, and we need to get our message to those people.
And parents have gotten information in the bell. We haven't gotten as much coverage this year in the local newspaper.
Right. Maybe, um.
As in past years.
Who's, who's the reporter who typically covers us?
Luke.
Luke.
I think it's rotating now.
But it actually was a woman who contacted me.
Stephanie never.
Yes.
She's a new person.
She's the editor now.
And she ca- she did call me about the budget, and I gave her information, and then it wasn't in the paper, so I don't know.
It was in the paper, because I read it.
Is it in this week, because it wasn't in?
It was, I think, last week. There was not a huge thing, but it's because they actually grouped it with CBUs and the towns. It was all like embedded in that same article, so it's, it doesn't have its own light.
Was it under the town headline or something?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yes. Because I read it on the paper, yeah.
So I started wrestling, oh, that's about the time, so.
Yes, it was all together.
Okay.
So.
Front porch forum.
From, yes, there you go.
Yeah, front porch forum.
Have your neighbors over for coffee and talk budget?
What about Twitter?
Well, you know, it's all about the audience that's listening already.
We don't have a following.
You don't have time to grow that.
Right, no, but what we have, I mean.
Oh, yeah, it's like our, it's like our school board Facebook page. Trying to get, slowly scratching it out, you know, getting a couple more shares and likes.
I don't get, why, you don't, you don't wanna put it in the school bell?
I think the school bell's fine, you can't tell them to vote yes or no.
No, 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 but that's the point.
No, you can encourage them to vote and give them information on how to vote.
Because I think, yeah, exactly, that's, because I think your idea of early or absentee ballot.
I'm thinking of all those CBU kids who are eighteen who went through the system, who may not be registered to vote.
I'm happy to talk as an individual to anyone who is interested in advocacy issues after the meeting.
Great.
I've even done that, I've gone to CBU and set up, and registered kids in the past.
That's your individual, right? Good for you.
Mary Peterson has done that quite frequently, like Sean at the soccer game.
Yep.
So Madam Chair, where are we at?
Are there little bundles of people who are going to do some of the things that were mentioned, as in front porch forum, another article in the paper, and?
I'll work on the Facebook piece. The article's going in this week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to track down the editor and see whether they could do a more focused story on.
Our school.
Our school, maybe from a historic perspective.
The challenge is the deadline, because there's only one more, there's only one more observer before town meeting.
So it's next Tuesday.
And that's vacation.
Yes.
I like the absentee.
I will, last year or the year before, I corresponded with front porch forum and got access to all of the front porches for Williston. There's some rules, there's some things you can do and can't do as a, you know, to use this, to use this, I need to go review that, and then I'll take, I'll take the to do to go.
Well, I think front porch forum actually updated, so now it, you're not tied to a specific region, it's like everybody in Williston.
Yeah, no, I think so, but there's, they have ways you can post for, for town officials.
Oh, I see.
And I have that access, so I need to go review what is allowed and not allowed, and what's the right and wrong thing to do there.
I see.
So I'll take, I'll take front porch forum, yeah.
Okay. All right, should we move on to action matters?
The only thing, we have, I still have a copy of your letter that you wrote.
The iPad one?
Yeah, that's a, I mean, it's a great letter, we can put that on the bell.
I'd be happy to have that done, that's fine. Remind me, I'll tweak it a little bit so that it's a little more written for the audience, but yeah.
What letter?
I'll send it to you guys. What happened was, another school board member from Charlotte, it was Lynn, sending an email and asked me about our one-to-one program, because they were looking at doing, they were having a discussion whether they wanted to purchase iPads versus laptops.
Oh, UCC does, didn't you?
I thought I did.
Yeah, you did. Could you send links?
Yeah, that's, oh, yeah, right, all that stuff.
I thought UCC does.
Yeah, so there you go, that's what that is.
Got it.
So you wanna tweak it, and then we'll put it in the bell for next, because I thought that was a great one.
Yeah, sure, you have to.
All right, so let's move on to action matters. Seven point one, scheduled retreat date. Are people okay with Friday, May thirty first?
Yep.
Following the same format that, well, it didn't happen for us last year, but that hopefully will happen for us this year. The morning is for the locals, and then the afternoon is, everyone comes together.
That's not Memorial Day weekend?
No, it's after, actually, this year.
Okay.
So, but that Monday is Memorial Day weekend, it's Friday.
Does that work for everyone?
Sure.
I would say for now.
Yeah.
Can't do it next week.
All right, so seven point two, the St. George Williston letter of intent. So typically, we have been, we have a long history, I don't know how far back it goes, with St. George, around having their students come to Williston, and we get the benefits of the tuition and pieces like the donations to FAPAC. And under the contract that we had last year, of course, I'm trying to find it, the wording is that by April, is it April?
Mm-hmm.
That we will have this letter of intent.
Do we historically enter into ten-year contracts?
Yes, and they were looking, they evaluating it to see if they wanted to do something else, so we're pretty fortunate that they don't at this point.
Great.
So we need a motion to approve the letter of intent between St. George and Williston?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Thanks, Walter. Next, we have seven point three, approval of the transfer of seven thousand dollars to the construction fund to complete the theater lighting upgrades. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is nothing different than what we've discussed during the budget presentations, no material changes?
No, and if, people, you know, I think what this is doing is putting it into the construction fund, you still have to approve the use of it for the theater, because I know you had some questions about it. This, one thing we may look at though, is, the reason why is there's not enough money in the construction fund to do everything. The most critical thing is the electricity, simply that it's underpowered, and it's blowing out circuit breakers. But this just puts the money aside, is what it does.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have our consent agenda, we have pulled out eight point three point one, the petty cash, oh, no, eight point three point two, travel and related expenses.
Didn't you, did you skip the leave request, seven point four?
Oh, you're right, thank you.
Well, we have a couple, all right, that's not.
Seven point four leave requests, so we have two leave requests, one was in our packet.
And I'll take, yeah, I'll take the other one first, because I just barely pulled it out, and what it is, is our family consumer science teacher is expecting, and she will, is scheduled to leave on April twenty ninth, and the problem is that she's probably going to run out of leave time about three days before the end of the school year. And so officially, she would have to come back, or she says here, I'd be willing to take it unpaid, rather than come back for the last two or three days of the school year. So that's her request, is to at least be able to take it unpaid, or, you know, if, but still to have the time on.
And this request is consistent and customary with, with our, our practice.
Family, it's a, you know, family.
Yeah, it's, this is, just, you know, we usually do, if somebody asks for the year off.
No, I agree, I'm just, I'm asking the question, that's all.
We usually do, if somebody asks for the year off, and, you know, they give us enough notice, we can do that. This just happens to be one of those rare cases where it's like, all right, come back for the last three days.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever run into so close to the end of the year. So do we have a motion to approve the three days of unpaid time off?
Okay, so are we, are we moving, did she take it unpaid? Is that, we're just extending her leave, her unpaid leave?
Her unpaid, right, now, she said, I'll take it unpaid.
Yes.
As long as I can have the leave.
Yeah, is, is her, I'm sorry, I just, is maternity leave paid for a certain amount? Or not unpaid, it's just a?
She can take her sick time.
Right, in vacation, right.
So these three would be unpaid?
Yep.
So do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Discussion?
I just had it, sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Karen Roberts.
So next, we have Ann McNeet, so it was just the one that you just approved.
Correct.
So Ann McNeet, you received the letter, and one of the things we look at is, we usually only approve somebody for a one-year leave, you know, because we have hired people to take their place, they've learned the system, they've become accustomed to working in the buildings, and when we let somebody else come back, no matter what the position is, it's gonna cause some disruption to the system itself. And, and our, our pretty much standard practice has been, and the board's practice has been, that we will allow you to have one year leave off for different reasons, but that's usually the one that.
She's a phenomenal teacher.
She is a phenomenal teacher. And the piece that I like about it, I'm thinking I'm supposed to make a motion, the piece that I like about it is that she, typically, people wanna take a leave, she is actually turning it into a research project to benefit the school when she comes back, which I have not seen, I have not seen anyone do that.
There's a little guidance with that, just so you know.
What is she exploring on her?
She's in.
The educational system.
She's in Switzerland, so she's saying.
Sweden, no, no, Sweden.
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 All right. Up there. The point is, is she says that she wants to leverage because of the pizza ratings and the proximity with Finland, right?
I, I, I'm, I'm torn.
Yes.
I mean, I really see the virtue of this, I'm really torn about the precedent it sets.
I feel like, I feel like we have approved people.
We have, there are occasions when it's actually, to our benefit because of the budget challenges we've had.
Right.
We've done it when we've had to, but that's not our standard practice.
Is this a positive for the budget, since she's a senior?
We've already taken our account in budget as part of the change process. We, we knew, I mean, we figured early on that she may not be coming back, because we hadn't heard anything.
And the person, the person who's taking her place right now, would that person continue? Or does it depend on staffing?
Well, it's Julie Rogers, right?
No, it's, it's very complex, it is very complex. But basically, yeah, basically, this is asking for another leave, so everything else the way it is at school right now would just stay the way it is. Stay the same, it would be the year after that it would change.
And what, what's your, what's your leaning?
You usually do two answers.
Do you have a leaning?
I mean, I like the idea of what she's doing, but it is disruptive to the system to have somebody gone for two years and then have to move people around, or figure out who's gonna have to leave to make room. That's what it is. Especially after we've invested two years of somebody working for us.
Would the administration feel more comfortable if we were discussing this in executive session?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay, I, I would move.
Do we feel like we need more discussion?
I, I feel like I, I do.
Okay, all right, we'll move it to executive session then. All right, so we're on to eight point zero, the consent agenda, we have taken out eight point three point two. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda without eight point three point two?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, eight point three point two, travel and related expenses, so Josh had a?
There was an appendix referenced in the policy, and I didn't see the appendix, so.
Giovanna.
Yeah. Hold on, the last time we talked about this is like three months ago.
Sorry, shouldn't be so. I mean, in general, I, I think the policy's fine, but there seem to be limits, and I thought it would be big to know what those are.
Does anybody know about the, the policy?
Well, isn't it on the website?
Well, the appendix, you mean, you mean where?
That's the point.
The following items are reimbursable within limits outlined by the appendix and procedures for this policy, so I didn't see the appendix.
Oh. Let me, let me look for what we did in the past, because I, I honestly cannot remember, it's been such a long time.
There's Cindy.
Oh, perfect.
Geez, I didn't even have to type it in, too.
That's amazing, amazing technology these days.
What happened to that?
That must mean we are the only ones left tonight.
Is Cindy gone?
No, I, they're still there, I need to get that here.
Okay, so we'll get.
So our question is around the policy on travel and related expenses.
Yeah.
And there is a reference to an appendix that is not here, so wondering what's in the appendix.
The appendix is gonna become procedures, so we can correct that to say outlined procedures. That was, excuse me, I'm a little out of shape. The original propos, the original policy contained appendix, the policy committee recommended at the last meeting, withdraw the appendix, so that we can adopt the, adjust the procedures as needed.
So it would read?
We could change it to outlined by the procedures for the policy, just strike by the appendix.
And so what are gonna be the guiding principles for setting, I assume these are?
Um, right now, we use the IRS guidelines for most of them, so, to help them cause we lack kind of our pick.
Actually, there's new guidance on that, from the IRS, right?
And then, because I think it's something about one call. Yeah, yeah, so, meals and lodging is definitely based on the IRS guidelines, transportation requires the most, the least expensive options, and the cheaper statement of the town.
Should I grab him back?
Use the personal, we use the IRS rate. And car rental, we rarely cover that, because I think it's, if the transportation's cheaper from the airport, then you don't rent a car, that's more cost effective, you rent the car.
Okay, with that proper, I'm okay.
Okay, all right, so do we have a motion to approve eight point three point two with the recommendations from Cindy?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second? Any further conversation, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Is he gone?
I'll get him.
The only reason I did this tonight was to get Bob here, and now he's gone.
So confirming next meeting dates, is everyone all set with the meetings that are coming up?
Do you have the, you wrote the change in times, Molly?
Uh, is that where we are? Right. The change in times, that your WSD meeting next time is at six and goes to seven thirty, and your CSSU follows that, seven thirty-five to eight fifteen.
And that's because of the reorganization.
Because we will be a new board, and we will have to elect a new chair and do all the assignments and get all that stuff done.
At six, because it says five.
Yeah, but it's changed to six.
Six, thank you.
WSD, six to seven thirty, and then SU will follow.
All right.
You'd be early.
I'm sorry, six o'clock instead of five o'clock?
Yes.
Right, correct. And correct me if I'm wrong, the agenda review meeting is still up in the air, correct?
We got something from Sandy, and it said.
I confirmed I could make whatever time it was, but I was waiting for you to confirm.
No, I did, I have confirmed.
Yeah, it's confirmed.
Okay.
For whatever she told us.
I can't remember what it was. It's not February twenty ninth, though, because.
I know, I said.
That was a good catch.
I said, I think that's the right.
There's no February twenty.
So we're all set with that. Um, ten point zero, director's comments.
I've commented.
Yeah, me too.
I'm gonna thank Holly.
Yes, 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 yes. I can't comment it back in.
Thank you.
And I think we've all really enjoyed the review.
I really, I really gonna miss it. I really am. Some days I won't, but, yeah, I am, I am.
Well, it literally becomes your life, you know, a part of your, it's like another child of yours or something.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate everything.
It's been a great second year. And I appreciate the administrative support as well.
You're welcome. Done a great job.
So shall we move, make a motion to move into executive session for litigation and personnel?
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. He came out.